I guess it's time to call this meeting of order at six o'clock. On February seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Let's start with the roll call. We'll start with David.
Uh, David Flader, student school board rep.
Amanda Huak, student services director.
Sean Moynihan, principal, Sonopie Elementary School.
Even made assistant principal, Sonopie Elementary School.
Patrick Gordon, principal, Sonopie Central Elementary School.
May I see your school board?
Andy Nichols, school board.
Scott Richman, school board.
Russell Wilson, superintendent.
Kelly Wilson, superintendent of the district.
Let's say the pledge of allegiance. So let's start out with approving the minutes from prior meetings. In January, we had a budget hearing. It's before the regular board meeting, so let's look at those minutes. And do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January tenth coming towards the new budget here.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Everything looks good?
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. What about the minutes uh from the school board meeting that followed that hearing? From January tenth, twenty twenty-four? I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we've got the minutes from a CIP meeting on January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four CIP meeting.
I will second the motion. Andy? Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Feels like the meeting after the annual deliberative session, doesn't it? Okay, agenda review. Any changes to the agenda?
As it stands.
Okay. Well, if we're also with the agenda, we jump right into a presentation. Sonopie Central Elementary School presentation.
Jess White is here to present uh regarding literacy, some things that have been happening, some things were currently happening, and looking towards the future.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Hey, yeah, I took your head comments to be an update on literacy at the elementary school. So earlier this fall, a bill was passed that requires all students in kindergarten through third grade be screened for dyslexia within the first sixty school days of the year, or the first sixty days of their ride ahead of school. And then according to those results, within the following thirty days, we follow up with additional screeners and assessments to get some more information on the students who don't meet the benchmark scores. And then according to those additional results, we report out to families and we plan interventions for the students based on their needs to come up with a plan to best meet those individual needs, whether it be in the classroom or down in the lab with reading teachers such as myself. So we, let's see, last year we started doing some research on a variety of assessments that are available, norm referenced ones, that are going to give us percentiles to compare our students to other students throughout the country. We researched a lot of options out there. We reached out to some reading and writing specialists throughout the state, some administrators throughout the state. We had some Zoom meetings with a few of the companies offering those assessments. So we ended up going with Renaissance Learning in their STAR assessments. One reason we chose this company is the tests, they had all of the subtests that we were looking for that really target the different aspects of dyslexia and other reading related disorders. They touched upon pretty much everything that we were looking for, and they also met the state requirements. Um, these, their whole platform is pretty intuitive, user friendly, some great reporting that is available through them too that was important to us, including a caregiver report, someone who sent home scores to parents. There are tips, for example, at the bottom for activities that you can do with your child at home if they're struggling in a specific area. So we're, we're pretty happy with the decision that we made there. The tests cost us about seven dollars and fifty cents per student. We had a hundred and eleven students. We also needed to pay for a little bit of professional development just to make sure we were administering the tests so that the results were um valid and reliable. So I'd say it cost our district around thirteen hundred dollars for this additional assessment. And um that was a negotiated price though, because it's a first year price for us that we were able to manage. The typical price, I believe, is about eleven dollars and fifty cents per student. Um, and we'll see if those prices stay the same next year. We will, we're hoping to have some more professional development there too. Either to fully better utilize the reporting options through them, or to potentially do some professional development for other teachers in the building who would like to be able to administer these tests with the students, um should that be what the E L A committee decides. And if, if that were the case, um you know, if they stay with eleven fifty per student, that price would be closer to about seventeen hundred dollars next year. One of the things that these assessments bring to us that's different from the other assessments we do with our kiddos is these are really fluency measures that are measuring how quickly our students are able to demonstrate the skills that we are targeting, which essentially shows mastery of those skills. We don't have anything else like that at the elementary school, so that has been um interesting for us. So the first round of assessments, it's a computer adapted test. So all of the kiddos use their Chromebooks, kindergarten through third grade. I would say it took around thirty or forty minutes per grade level, maybe a little less for the younger kids like in kindergarten. So in total, maybe about two and a half hours worth of testing with all the grades. And the results that you get from that testing are pretty much immediate, and so it's very clear who met benchmark, who needs additional screening. So from there, being a small district, we didn't have like thirty days, we just dove right in. We had about thirty-one percent of our students qualify for the additional screening. And the additional screening, those are all individual one-on-one tests, and they're one-minute probes. And a student could take anywhere from three to eight of those subtests, depending on their progress and and how they deal with it and their age. So for example, some of those subtests might be, in a minute, identify as many letters as you can. Identify as many sounds of letters as you can. In a minute, take as many short words that you can and break apart the sounds. So dog, duh, bong, good. So it's really targeting specific early literacy skills that are required in order to develop into a reader. In a minute, identify as many sight words as you can. There are some words our students just have to memorize. They have to know it because they appear in their text so frequently and so often. Not all of them can really be decoded, right, because or come, like you just have to know it. And so a whole series, there are other tests just like that. I'd say testing probably took anywhere from like ten to thirty minutes per child, depending again on how they did with each of those. So we probably spent about eight and a half hours testing those follow-up assessments. The results from that showed us about twenty-four percent of our students really um didn't meet the benchmark scores that we would hope for, so that means they qualify for intervention, whether that be in the classroom or with the specialists. And of that group, we had eight percent of them are really just on watch. So they're sort of in this safety percentile, right? They're below the fifteenth percentile. You just want to keep an eye on them. There aren't really any red flags, but we're hopeful that you target those areas and you can see the progress that you won. And the remainder of those students were in the lower percentiles between one and nineteenth percentile. When, when I think about that twenty-four percent, like nationally, nationally, we have about twenty percent of the population has dyslexia or another reading related disorder. So the twenty-four percent that we might see in our school isn't really a surprise at all. We're not in the business of diagnosing students with anything when we use these sort of assessments. But because of science and a lot of research, we know the typical red flags of students who struggle with reading in the areas in which they're going to struggle. And also because of science and a lot of research, we know specific practices that are most effective for students who struggle, especially in those areas. That are, and those instructional practices are just a little more intensive than what is typically required for the, the general student to learn how to read. So um, yeah, that's, I think, yeah, I think long term, I, I'm curious to just look at the results of this and what this looks like through the years to determine whether or not that would influence how we do things whole class versus just what are we doing for these particular students or these small groups of students? Now, do we need to consider anything for everybody? It's too soon, it's too soon to tell, but that's just something that we'll be looking at moving forward. Um, our E L A committee, we're in our fourth stage of our review cycles right now. We're kind of looking at all of our information and planning to come up with recommendations. So we're putting together a report that we'll hopefully have for you guys by June with some goals for literacy for our district and plans for how to meet those goals. One way we determine those recommendations that we'll make is by, you know, last year we put out a staff survey to get feedback from the staff about resources and professional development that they feel really secure with, and then also what they're hoping for. We reported that out to teachers, we'll include that in our report for this year. This past fall, we met and we analyzed three years' worth of all of the literacy data that we had to kind of look for trends over time. And we drew some conclusions based on that and would like to make some recommendations based on that data. Our teachers have just recently finished up what's called a literacy needs assessment. So basically, it's this really long document that maps out all of the components of literacy instruction, best practices. And our teachers are scoring themselves for how consistently they're doing some of these things, when they are doing these things, to what degree. And the committee will be looking at those results to really determine, well, what is it we do here at Sonopie that is working really well? Like, why can we explain some of this amazing strength that our students have? Well, it's because we are doing X, Y, and Z. And then of course, also looking for, are there any gaps? Is there like, where is our opportunity for growth? Like, where do we want to focus moving forward? So we kind of take all of that to plan out these goals and just determine moving forward where we want to invest our, our time and our resources. I think some of our goals can be achieved in a year, others maybe three, three years or, or even five, just considering that literacy is just one piece of what we do at the elementary school. And there, there's a lot of time and effort that needs to be put towards everything. So. Any questions?
So the new testing you found, did the information's very helpful, or is it already something you kind of had?
Oh, that's a great question. So the way we operate is essentially the same. Like, we already have these phases of assessment, and we use the data to determine what we're doing with the kiddos. So it was kind of nice that it didn't really change how we operate at all. I think the information in some ways validates the things that a lot of our teachers already suspected or knew about our students. I think it's important to triangulate your data, to have multiple sources of information, to paint a picture about how a student is doing. I do think some of the assessments illuminated certain areas to literacy instruction where it just made you think, oh, like, maybe let's target that a little bit harder than we have in the past and see what happens. So I think, like I said, I think, I think it's validating in some way, it's helpful to guide us as well. I would also caution against putting too much weight on any one particular assessment. I think to overemphasize the value of these tests versus everything else that we're doing might be a little dangerous. So I think balance is pretty good.
I think that's a great point, Jess, too. You know, dyslexia has a lot of connotation, denotation that goes along with it, and when these families are getting these results, to your point, you're not in the business of diagnosing kiddos. So we're now, we're not taking this twenty-four percent and labeling them and say, guess what, you're dyslexic till you graduate from Sonopie. That's what's happening. How, what's kind of the thought on, what does it, what does it tell that family and then how does it travel with that student as they go through?
Yeah, that's a good question. And we, we didn't hear a whole lot from families. Of course, there were parents who got the letter and then it, it gave them an opportunity to touch base again with the teachers and ask some questions, like, what does this mean? Or what do we need to focus on? And I think it just starts some really good conversations about, hey, here are some things that we really want to zero in on with your child to best support them. And then here are these other aspects, though, that we're seeing where they're really demonstrating some strengths and growth to sort of alleviate any concerns people might have. So for example, one question we've had or conversations we've had with parents too is, so what do you do with a kiddo who maybe isn't meeting the benchmarks? But then if you look at all the answers they provide, they have really high accuracy, right? So my, my child, the benchmark is you had to list fifty words in a single minute. You could only list thirty-five in a minute, but you did it with one hundred percent accuracy. Now, I know that's sort of the common denominator against all the kids who take that assessment nationally, you know what I mean? So technically, that should zero it out, but I think it's a conversation worth having with the parents. It just gives us some more to talk about, and I think it, it keeps teachers in, in touch with those parents too. Just another reason to touch base with them.
Thank you very much, Jessica.
Sure, thank you.
How about four? Would anyone like to step up to the mic this evening and share with us? You know? No? Y'all must have gone to a town reading last night. Okay, let's go to the uh school updates then. Elementary school, we'll start out with that question.
So as Jessica shared, we're in the midst of our middle-of-the-year assessments. We have our reading ones, um the traditional ones that we've used, the Fancis Penalt Benchmark Assessment that classroom teachers do with their students. It's a running record. They listen to a kid read a set book, answer some questions, and we get an idea of their accuracy, their fluency, and their reading comprehension from that. Um, we have, we administered our eye-ready math assessment and looking at the results. Um, we're reviewing it. We had Betsy Bowen um come back for her second uh window of math intervention. The number one theme that I'm hearing right now from teachers is, I wish we had more of Betsy. So we have her three times a year for four weeks, um where we take kids who did not test as well as their peers nationally, and we give them a booster. We focus in on the skills they need. So if they need geometry during her session, she's going to focus in on geometry. Um, Professional Development Day was informative and started a lot of great conversations. We had um special education uh attorney, our attorney, talking to us around special education law and uh tech security, courtesy of John. And it started a lot of great conversation in the school, a lot of questions that were left unanswered, but it was really thought-provoking, and those questions we've slowly gotten answered for. Um, I just want to take a moment to recognize that we lost a staff member. Um, in the last month, Marielle Sesser uh passed away very unexpectedly a couple of weeks ago. Um, she was a parent in our school district since last March or April. Um, she's been working in preschool, and she's been working with students across different grade levels. Um, it was a challenging couple, the first couple of days. Uh, the staff appreciated community support, uh the families appreciated the community support. And uh, there's going to be a celebration of her life next Friday, um which I know is a number of staff members planning to attend. Looking ahead, as Jessica mentioned, dyslexia screener is going to be in the next month. We'll see our, we'll see what we had at the beginning of the year, what we targeted, and the growths, and where we have to continue to grow. Uh, Valentine's Day is next Wednesday, and the elementary school has regularly done senior gift bags. They decorate the bags in our class. I got to watch that today. Um, they fill it with lots of little things. Some grades have some things they've historically always put in there. Um, and then they get driven around and delivered to about, I think, between seventy and eighty presidents. Um, and a number of them look forward to it every year. So that's everything I have to report.
Thank you. Middle high school update.
Yeah, I'll start with uh, David, you ready to go or?
All right, yeah, just need to fill it up. And so, just one letter of note. Unfortunately, tonight I'm going to have to leave right after I sign my bid. I have a scholarship meeting that I have to be on and after this, so, sick about that. Sonopie student life has, as of late, been lively as ever. Ski and basketball seasons are winding down, with both teams putting up a decent showing throughout the year. Middle schoolers have an upcoming Valentine's Day dance to look forward to, and high school students are soon going to attend plays on Broadway. I have a habit of asking people how they're doing, and recently I've noticed that a lot of high school students have been talking about their stress and poor mental health. For example, just the other day, I had someone say to me, quote, "It feels like I have a thousand things coming at me all at once, and as soon as I solve one problem, two more show up." It seems as if almost all students typically have some level of stress that is inherent to attending school. Over the recent months, it's started to ramp up and not affect only their school day, but their home one as well. I think that the notion that senior year is just hard is simply misguided. It seems to stem from the perceived correlation between difficulty and success that might not fit every student. And so I do have a question to ask, and I'm not sure who'd be the best to ask for this. Uh, Cameron Messenger, student school board rep before me, was a very strong advocate for mental health services and the support for students here. And I just wanted to ask if there was any resulting outcome from his advocacy, and if there was anything I could do as the current representative to further facilitate the development of programs or initiatives that address students' mental health needs. I know everyone has a lot going on, and I'm not sure what I can do to help ensure students are feeling positive and supported. What does this board think we can do next? I'm happy to help, but I think all the members of the school community have a role to play here.
I think if I understood you right, you mentioned that in the last few months it's been ramping up or getting worse, so.
Yeah, I've just, I've just noticed myself personally more from my, I don't have data, but it's more anecdotal that students are saying like, oh, I don't know what to do anymore, or students are kind of starting to lose track of assignments more often, that sort of thing.
Has anything happened to trigger that in the last few months?
I'm sorry?
Has anything happened to trigger, trigger that?
I can't, I can't point to any like one specific event and like say, that's what's causing this, but I feel it's a trend that I'm noticing as forming.
Yeah, I think, David, I think it's a great question to ask. Um, I think our, our children are dealing with a lot more of life and certainly a lot more anxious. And there's a lot of studies out there that'll tell you our, our kids are being raised in an anxious world. A couple of things. One of the things the board did last year in the budget was add another S E L position at the elementary school, which has been very helpful in that facility. And then again, Sean Olivas, our adjustment counselor here in the middle high school, in her first year, I think it's probably a little different than when Ms. Lamonte was here uh for the seven years that she was here. I think also, um, just the anxiety of, and you talked about being a senior, you know, applying to school, mid-year exams, acceptance letter, F A C S A forms, where am I going? All those things start to pile up in reality. The, the reality of life is, in three months from now, this is done. And something else is coming. Um, I hope that, I, I, I feel, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I hope kids are feeling that they have enough support coming out of our guidance department with some of those career choices. Again, post-secondary, end-of-workforce. Um, I think ensuring that your friends that you're talking to feel like they have a trusted adult in, in the building, I think is, is obviously one of the first and probably the most key steps that kids can have is knowing there's someone that they could go to and feel like, whether they're feeling just anxious, they're feeling overwhelmed, they're feeling sad, whatever it may be, to be able to have that conversation with an adult is critical. And so I, I, I think if you could maybe help people say, do you have that adult? And if you're finding that people don't have that adult, that would be really important for your administration to know. Um, like, because you run advisories. Again, we're a pretty small school. I know through N I S C, I believe some of that information was collected and was asked. So I, I think some of those things to start, I know our middle school runs an S E L program through middle school. We don't do as much of that in the high school, and part of that, I think, is the age, but part of that, I think, we just don't have a structured program other than what we run through our advisory program. So, and I know Mr. Martin probably wants to add a little.
Yeah, I think a, a good answer, you know, from the board is that we did provide more things. And the truth is, for a variety of reasons, that they're not accessed. You know, so we, we have somebody at the school, you know, I'll give a good example, that we have somebody who could lower the stress and went at, went around and um, you know, had a space for people to go through during exams. She put up advertising, advertisements. And just, we find a lot of kids didn't go to it, which I get, right? So it's, it was not during, um, I'll use, I'll use calculus as an example. Right? You're not going to leave your calculus exam to go to it, but we had that available for that stressful time. And I think a lot of kids just, at the end, it's like twelve o'clock and it's like, I'm going to go home. But we, as a board, we provided more resources to that, but resources, you know, frankly, aren't being accessed a whole lot for, for a variety of reasons. I think a lot of people do it independently. They'll have somebody. We see a lot more at the high school, for instance, where people will access counseling within the school. Um, but they don't necessarily do it through the person that we have, but we see a lot more of that. But we have added resources.
And I think, David, you're doing the right thing. And you know, I know I'm on the board, but as a mom, I think speaking up and saying, hey, look, this is where we are, and normalizing amongst your fans, like, hey, these things are here. Like, let's use them as a group. Let's all tell each other. This is one way we can try to take care of this. And, hey, you're feeling weird, I'm feeling weird, let's go together. Like, you know, let's try to figure it out together. To Mr. Holden's point, you know, as a board member, I would a thousand percent hope you can find somebody in the school, even if the question is, I know I'm supposed to know this, but I don't. I don't know where to go. I don't know who to ask. And, and maybe the question is, I don't even know the question. So here's where I am. How could you help me? You know, and I, I do hope and think you guys are as classmates, able to support each other to kind of normalize that. And I agree with you, right, you know, they are, you guys are growing up in an anxious, anxious world. And even if it's just an adult that says, it's okay to be nervous. You have a calculus test. It matters. It's important. It's not the end of the world, and that's okay. You know, and that's all right. I think, you know, maybe just being there for each other. And you know, to Mr. Moynihan's point, making sure you really see what's there to help you guys. And, and if you have questions and you can't figure it out, ask again. Just keep asking until you get kind of, you know, what you're really hoping for. I realize that's not a thousand percent helpful, but.
No, thank you for running here, but that is helpful.
And it, I mean, it is a small, tight-knit community, which is a real blessing. So hopefully someone, you know, is able to say, hey, I need help and you know, let the administration know, and there's a lot of people in town that care, and depending on the subject matter, you know, we can point to the right person. But yeah, you guys have a tough, I'm honestly glad that there was not cell phones or social media when I was your age. I think that just adds a whole other, you know, level of stress that um I'm glad we didn't have to deal with, honestly. It's really, you know, good and important that you're sharing, so thank you.
David, I would just ask you to ask this question. Um, if there are things that your peers or kids from other schools or other organizations are doing that people are finding beneficial, that could be useful here, to let us know. You guys are much more in tune to what's working for kids. Right? We, I, I can tell you, I can go pick a hundred programs and say, here, this is supposed to work. But maybe you know through the kids that you've met, through your St. Paul experience, through your ski experience, what's going on in your school? How does that work? What, what's there for a program? How does it, how's it about effective?
Thank you for your time, everybody. I'm, as always, available through email. You can send me a letter if you feel so inclined, call me. Thank you.
Very soon.
Anything else on the high school level school end of things?
Oh, yeah, pretty quickly. Um, you know, we're, um, one of the nice things, uh, we had a shadow day for incoming tuition students. I know that on the agenda today is the tuition rate. So we've uh done it a little bit earlier, but we had a number of students from Unity in particular who came. Uh, what's interesting on the tuition students, it's hard to predict each year. So for instance, I, I was, I've been in contact each year with the Lemster principal. And this year, we don't have a lot of Lemster students. From eighth grade, we're going to go into ninth grade. So typically, I contact uh Lemster. Uh, recently, Unity, I'll contact the Montessori school. Um, the Montessori school, some years we'll have zero, some years we'll have five. Um, looks like next year from the Montessori school, maybe one, Lemster school, maybe one, Unity school, maybe eight, you know, which is a huge number for Unity. So it's kind of a, a moving target. The Unity kids did come in shadow for the day. We typically do that with uh. We typically do that with any Unity Lemster students who'd like to do that. Last, at the last board meeting, Mrs. Parsons came in to speak about the service club, and one of the things they've been doing is the mentoring program. They're working with the third grade, having students from the service club go there. And as David said, we've got the Broadway trip. Bless his soul. So everybody is, it's a full, full load there. We've done the master schedule for next year. Students, we won't have them, them start to pick yet, but that'll be right around the corner, and second semester is well underway.
So how many kids are going to the Big Apple in April?
We've got a total, so the bus is fifty-six. I think it's, I wanna say it's forty-eight with eight chaperones.
Eight chaperones, wow. That's neat, because.
What could go wrong?
Well, you're not going at Christmas time, that's.
We're not going at Christmas time, no.
A little bit less chaotic. Thank you. Superintendent update. Oh, Patrick.
He did, Patrick.
Oh, he did? Mike, well, yeah. I'll keep this brief. So, so back in 2018, the governor's remit signed HB fourteen twenty-one, which was the Get Lead Out of Drinking Water Program Bill. It is now RSA, somewhere, but RSA forty-four eighty-five dot seventeen A, which calls for checking of schools and childcare places around the state to have their water tested, all water fountains, faucets, any place that water comes out of, tested for lead. The pot per million used to be up at eighteen, it's now down to five, which is point oh 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 five percent. And so as, we're tested, back in October, we had nineteen across the district that came back with above a five, above a five on, on the pot per million. And based upon statute, we have five days until identified families that our faucets are above, above, hit that threshold. We then take those out of commission, and then we put a remediation letter into the state, and we follow up with parents. The good news regarding our testing was that all our drinking fountains that we've put into the schools, the new one with the bottle filled stations, all showed no sign of lead. And that's where the majority of our kids are getting their water from. And we've encouraged and continue to encourage students and teachers to get their water out of those places. The unfortunate part is there is some of the piping within our buildings. This building, our old building, even within our town, it's old, and not all our faucets get used every day. Elementary school specifically is at the end of a, a main run, and the water's there. Folks know about the closet, if you don't know, there's a closet that runs water constantly to try to keep it fresh and moving in the basement of the elementary school. And so we have our remediation program, again, right now, those have been told, you can't drink out of them. We don't use the ones in the cafeteria. We're using, you know, ship water in for this clean faucet to use for food prep. We'll, we'll change the aerators on them, we will, and we're gonna purchase just canister filters that'll go on all the ones in the cafeteria, within the kitchens, so that that, we just don't have to deal with the problem anymore. Again, pipes it, dorm it, like the locker rooms, this probably sinks in that had been turned on in three months. If we come in, we do the test, we do the test, the water goes off, it's high in lead, goes out of commission. There is some money to help with some of the remediation. Again, we've done this now, this is our third line of testing, so we've went through it twice. This was the highest because of the threshold was low, or the highest amount of, of sinks or, or so that we came back with that above a high level. So we'll work with the state, see what funds are available, Matt and its crew are only, are already on it. Again, they've been flagged and identified. We have some lead in our water. It certainly isn't something that we're gonna just blow off. We do have to get retested. All those nineteen have to come back and get retested. As soon as we put our remediation steps in place, while the state come back to retest those, we'll continue to communicate with our, our community regarding what those results are, trying to ensure that all our faucets and any faucet in any sink and any drinking fountain in any place within our district is below the, the threshold of five pot per million, pot per million of lead, as required by law. Nothing on that?
No.
It's a lot. Andy?
I got all that?
Yeah, I got all that. I'm just wondering, what did that change in the state?
Two thousand eighteen is when it went in place, and two thousand and twenty-two.
It went down the pipeline?
Yeah.
That's really low.
Yep. Yep. But well, I mean, and, and again, not dismissing it, you know, we were one of every school.
Yeah.
That identified a faucet, right? Something, somewhere.
Any, any school that was put in before nineteen eighty's got some sort of lead in its water.
Yep.
It's gonna show up.
Yep. So again, we'll, we'll continue to work on it. I'm being concerned right now with the kitchens and getting those filtrations in those kitchens. Again, anything that was filtered, there was no trace of lead.
Right.
So, all right, great, that's it, let's be done.
How often do you have to change those filters?
Uh, I have to ask Matt, the ones in the drinking fountain, I'm not sure.
I imagine it's not very often because there's not a lot of lead in our water.
Right. The ones in the, the ones in the ones that they put the bottles under?
Yeah.
Uh, every twenty thousand, I believe, it was fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's a.
There's a number at the top, there's an indicator on it, yeah.
Last piece, I just wanted to follow up quickly with Jess. Jess, thanks for the presentation. Awesome. And Amanda, I love your question. It's not all about the one task, right? It's just, it's, it's an assessment. But, you know, our kids are also, so think about that twenty-four percent. There's a percentage of those kids that are already receiving services through IP's, receiving services through Title, Title One, receiving services through differentiated instructional equipment classroom. So there are just layers and layers and layers of support that we continue to provide for our kids. Unfortunately, I'm not saying this is a bad piece, it's not bad. It's just another piece of legislation that puts some stress on our district. And I think if you heard, if, if, one of the things that I heard as an administrator, like, this took time, this took some money, and great, we have results, but we were already sort of benchmarking some of these things along the way, but now we're mandated to do this because of a law, very much like drinking water testing, and we have to pay for that. So it's called an unfunded mandate, and the time and energy that my principal, my, my reading director put into this work, great work, but that's time that could have been spent doing something else with kids as well. So we have a lot of supports, a lot of kids are on a lot of different things, I think it's great. I think the report's great, I think that the idea is great. The unfunding part and understanding how a town like Nashville was able to put this, you know, you're talking about eight hours of time. Nashville, Manchester, the demand hours, person hours that it took to do that, I couldn't even imagine. So, thank you, Jess, I appreciate it. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. School board topics. No?
Good.
We've got, now we have a meeting coming up later this month for us that did not get finalized with Droidin.
Oh, yes, you have a, a non-meeting, is really what it is? Just a lot, 'cause you're not doing any business as a board, you're just having a non-meeting with the, with the Droidin School Board, I believe on, like, twenty, Thursday, the twenty-first, is it? Yes, I think we sent that out yesterday.
Okay.
If you didn't have it, twenty-second, I believe. Yes, twenty-second.
So that's just gonna be a chat, basically?
It's just a conversation between you and the board.
No real action items?
Yes, there's no action, there's no, no burden, no nothing here, it's kinda, just two boards having a conversation regarding, you know, if there are opportunities, if there are, what those opportunities might be, what are the things that you as a board are looking for, what are they looking for? There's no outcomes coming out of that, there's no expectations. Really following up from your conversation from last May.
June, May, June. Okay. Okay, well, we've got a couple of action items. It looks like we are going to review and approve the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar.
I'm making a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school calendar.
A second.
Any comments on that?
So, yeah, we worked with the Department of Education, we worked with our neighboring schools regarding CTE schedules, ensuring that those things are in line. Christmas falls on Wednesday or Thursday, so it's a nice long break for folks. We moved some PD stuff around. We've also had input from the STA, and I think people are feeling really good about the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar.
Russ, the only thing I saw is in, because I'm a nerd, in November, you have tenth as that transition date. It's the eleventh on the actual calendar.
I thought we changed that, thank you.
Okay. And I'll be cheering for all the teachers in March and April. It's a long stretch.
It's a haul.
Snow, we will cheer for snow days during the summer.
Surprise.
Surprise, snow day.
So you, you consult with the teachers association when you put this together, if you're.
Yes. Per contract, they have input before it's approved by you as a board, which they have done.
Well, all in favor of the proposed calendar for a twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year? Say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Calendar has been approved for next school year.
Thank you very much.
Next on the list is the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty-five tuition rates, which remain at the same level as this year, it looks like. Any thoughts on that, or?
Yes, and so we went around, Kelly had gone, had Beth go around, our constable person, talked with Goshen, Lemster, and, and Unity. Our, our issue really is, is Lemster. So we have right now seventeen kids from Lemster. We, we had discussed going up and, and not wanting to, to overburden again and keep us in the game. Lemster has a very low tuition rate that they're giving out. They're down to about fifteen through eight. And they've actually gone down over the last couple of years. I have a theory behind that, though I don't have to share now, but. So right now, we're gonna leave things alone to ensure that kids that are here, that can continue to stay here without being a huge burden for parents. We also will leave at the fifteen K eight and the sixteen on the nine through twelve. We thought about going with sixteen to five, but I think we're gonna leave some kids behind, and I was just concerned about that.
Okay. Yeah, fifteen thousand for K through eight, and sixteen thousand for nine through twelve.
Yep.
Okay.
And Russ, is the breakdown because, I mean, that's obviously not how our buildings are structured. Is it in the state, it's K eight and nine twelve?
It's just how the board is, the side of the structure, that based upon the offerings within our, within those academic years.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed tuition rates for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
A second.
Second, from Amanda. Any further discussion? Any further questions? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, next on the list, deliberative session review. We had our deliberative session on Monday, and I think I heard before the meeting tonight was for forty-seven minutes. Is that a record, or?
Um, I, I have to say it's not.
It's not?
I, I think my second year here with Harry Gale, I saw something I think I've never saw before, but I think it was a lot closer to the twelve, fifteen minute mark, seventeen minutes maybe. Harry, Harry, God bless him, God rest his soul, was a, was a hell of a moderator and could move things along. I'll just say that.
Keep this number for the future.
Yes, it might be a, a record.
Okay, well, very good. Do you guys have any thoughts about the other night?
I think, well, pretty much without a hint.
I appreciated how many people came out. That was my first one, obviously, so it was great. It was a great experience.
Didn't scare you away for next year?
I don't think I have a choice, Russ.
No, you don't have a choice.
It's good. I thought, I thought it was great to see the board well-prepared to respond to questions, understanding what was in that budget, understanding what was in your warrant articles, to be able to just, you know, you don't have to do that every day, but to be able to go up there and be able to do that, I thought that was great, and I agree with Amanda. It's nice to see people show up.
I did go home mad because I had written down to thank Amanda and her team for all the work they do for that special ed, to be able to come to that number and to be able to have that fun. And I stopped talking, and I looked down, and I thought, "I don't think I can start talking again. It's gonna mess it up." So thank you in error for everything you guys do. It's amazing.
Can I ask a question on the, with the biomass? It felt like, so we've got the, these fifty-year-old boilers.
Yep.
We've got our warrant. If the boilers, like, if the warrant doesn't pass and our boilers fail next year, what would happen?
This, this, based on what we heard from EEI, we'd have to replace those to the turn of one point two million dollars for propane boilers.
And so like literally, financially?
It would have to go, well, a lease would have to probably be put into our budget.
But, right, it's November, we have no boilers.
Right.
What are we looking at in terms of, like, what contingency funds do we have? Like, how much of an impact are we talking? Because I think that sense of urgency.
Yeah, I mean, so we have, we have, we have, you know, three, a little less than thirty thousand dollars in our contingency fund. The building one up here has a hundred and ninety-six, I mean, so it's soaking all of that. And then we're freezing our budget and taking everything out of our budget to go into, into paying that off, that's not to have a default budget.
Or, or we would have to release agreement and put that into our budget.
We would have, but we're already in the system, we'd have to go and put it in, like, we'd have to pay for it.
Pay for it out of our current budget.
And then we're like, and then the following year.
The following year, we'd go into our budget.
Right.
You know, so we're not like SOL, but.
Yeah.
But it would be, it would be a huge.
We're not in a good, in a good spot.
It's not a great place to be.
Right, yeah.
And hopefully people understand, you know, we are getting four hundred thousand dollars in grant money, which is a big deal. Thirty percent.
And forgive me if I'm out of turn, but is there any way to tuck it more? It just seems like the whole athletic, like, when you go in, when you look down the back row of our school and the, that's just some of the comments I'm hearing, like, is there a way to tuck it? Like, lose ten sparking, parking spots that way without it being so, so visible of the campus?
Right now, we haven't finalized where it's gonna go, but that is the most.
Efficient.
Sensible place for it to go. Because you are within the setbacks of the waterway.
Yeah.
We already have a building.
Oh, okay.
So we already have an existing building.
Footprint.
Right. It's kinda like a building place on the lake, right?
Yeah.
Even though it's just a broken, broken stuff, all the same old.
Okay.
And so, you know, otherwise, we have to really scour the place and try to probably put an addition on the building, which would be a little better and more money.
Yeah.
You know, so.
And I guess maybe there'll be a way to.
Tuck it back in this parking lot, behind the shop.
Decorate it a bit or make it more aesthetically pleasing somehow, you know.
So one of the issues that came up when we were building the elementary school one is, well, there's so much land. But remember, an eighteen-wheel truck full of wood chip has to back into that.
In there frequently.
It has to have accessibility to be able to do that. And that's really a big factor into where you can put that to have that accessibility.
And this is just great information to have to give to people.
Yeah.
Right? And then, yeah.
And I think as they're talking around town to people about it between now and the election, also remember that we lose that four hundred thousand dollars if it doesn't get approved this year. That's not something.
That doesn't give, that's not gonna happen again next year.
Right, we can't get that later, so it's like, do you wanna, you know, pay over a million dollars later? Only eight hundred thousand now, because it's not gonna be an option later.
You know, the other nice thing is, like I was mentioning last night, is we get rid of that, the old underground oil tank, right? That's gonna go away and get decommissioned. And then we'll have modern, buried propane tanks. But you won't, all you'll see is the fill tank on them, and they won't really take any, any spots or anything like that. And talking with EEI, I mean, they, I think even if they do the boilers that are to propane, they're gonna wanna put them in an outbuilding. Because of the restrictions getting them in here, and also plumbing for the propane and everything else, it just kinda made more sense to have them off-site. So either way, I think that we're gonna either have to have an addition or an outbuilding.
Okay. And so if it's not that there, it could be propane tanks? Is what you're saying?
Propane tanks be buried.
Okay.
But no, that, that, if we did do a biomass.
Right.
The likelihood of having an exterior boiler room.
Yes.
Is likely.
So that's what I'm saying, like, you don't go for the biomass, whatever you're doing, there's something ugly out there. Or something additionally adding to the landscape.
Aesthetics.
Aesthetics, yes, yes. Okay. That's great to know. Thank you.
Outside of the old Yankee Stadium, they have a smoke stack, and they made it look like Babe Ruth's bat. So maybe they'd do something like that, or there's a baseball field there.
There has been a lot of candidate interest to decorate the boiler stack.
You know, it's sort of like the wall that went up at the elementary school. At first, when you were coming down the hill, you were like, oh my God, look at that wall. You know, when you were coming down by the veterans' field, coming into town. Now it's like, there's the wall, you know?
I certainly think we can help blend, no, one of the elementary schools, but the one here, if it passes. It doesn't have to stay white. Certainly can change, change some color to it. Uh, I know the elementary kids have talked about maybe doing a mural, but certainly a shade of green that fits into the rest of the green buildings would make it a little less of a.
You know, I see so many of the silos now on all these, at campuses everywhere. You know, our, our company does a tremendous amount of work around college campuses and school campuses. And it's just, to me, it's just normal now. When you see a silo, it's like, oh, they're running a botanist. You know, that's just the thing, you know? Nursing home, like, everybody has converted to botanist because it just makes more sense to them. I understand.
Thanks for the info, I appreciate it.
We'll talk it up. And this is a lease, so it's a 50% pass, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Very good. Um, anything else on the deliberative session? No? Well, we have some manifests to approve then, it looks like. Would anyone like to address those and make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the AP in favor of manifests as written.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving those manifests?
Aye.
Aye. Manifest approved. Agenda items for the next meeting.
Well, we're gonna say goodbye to you, Mr. Richmond, as a longstanding board member